And this is Gavel to Gavel, WCBW-TV's complete coverage of the Richmond City Council. Good evening once again, I'm Dick Harmon. Welcome to our first meeting of the month of March. We have, I think one thing I'll say for sure, we're not going to be here as long as you were at our last meeting, which lasted till almost midnight. We're here a little over five hours. Don't think we'll be here that long tonight. We have four items on consent agenda. We have 15 appointments, one reappointment, four items in the regular agenda, but there will be changes and we'll go through those. As we check the agenda, let's start right now with ordinance number 2013-175. This is item number one. This declares surplus and directs conveyance of 1722 Arlington Road to McKinnon and Harris for $1.4 million for the purpose of stimulating private investment, job creation, et cetera. That's going to be continued till our next meeting on the 24th of March. Item two, ordinance 2014-27, and this is directing the conveyance of 210 North Belvedere to Monroe Park Campus Corporation for the purpose of facilitating the transfer of the property to VCU. This is for the construction of the Institute of Contemporary Art, and that too will be continued till the 24th of March. Item three, and that is Resolution 2014-R30. This approves $250 from the 9th District to pay for the distribution of flyers to 9th District residents, that stays on consent. And item number four, Resolution 2014-R31. That approves $575.67 from 9th District for the printing of postcards for dissemination to the 9th District residents. That stays on consent. Those are the only two items on consent agenda tonight out of the four. Now we get to appointments and reappointments, and we'll go through these. Item number five, this appoints Sanford Bond, member of the Commission of Agricultural Architectural, rather Architectural Review. That stays on the appointments. Item six, appoints Larry Boyd to the Central Virginia Waste Management Authority. That's being continued for two weeks. Item seven, Arthur Burton, member of the Career and Technical Education Commission, stays on the appointments. Item eight, appointing Betsy Carr, member of the Career and Technical Education Committee. Item number nine, Brenda Kurton, member of the Career and Technical Education Commission. Item number 10, Cora Dickerson, member of the Aging and Disabilities Advisory Board. Those all stay on consent or on the appointments and reappointments portion of the program. Item number 11, and this one they had a little bit of talk about, it's appointing Tishy Pickney-Epps, a member of the Career and Technical Education Commission. Now, as you know, you're supposed to have, if you're being appointed, you need to be here in person. If you're reappointed, you don't need to be. However, that can be waived. That was the case of Ms. Pickney-Epps, who I believe is under the weather tonight, not able to make the meeting, but that one has been waived, so they will vote on that particular appointment tonight even though she cannot be here. Item 12, appoint Jeffrey Gallagher, member of the Business Professional Occupational License Task Force. Item 13, Raifert Harris Sr., member of the Career and Technical Education Commission. Item 14, Gerald Jason Hendricks, member of the Commission of Architectural Review. 15, Bethany J. Miller, member of the Career and Technical Education Commission. 16, appoints Ellen Robertson, member of the Career and Technical Education Commission as an at-large member. Item 17, appointing Victoria Shivey, member of the Clean City Commission. That one has been withdrawn. And then item 18, appointing Michael Taylor, member of the Career and Technical Education Commission. Item 19, appointing Carl J. Kurton, member of the Career and Technical Education Commission. And 20, appointing Ira Say Jr., member of the Building Code Board of Appeals Electrical Division. Those are all the appointments and reappointments. That's the only reappointment, the rest are appointments. And then we get to the regular agenda, well, we can get this one done quickly. Item 21, ordinance 2013-199, special use of 1110 Grove Avenue for the purpose of permitting up to seven multifamily dwelling units, continued for two weeks. Item 22, ordinance 2014-23. This is amending or eradining concerning additional retirement allowance for certain city officials for the purpose of allowing the classifications of senior assistant to the mayor, press secretary, senior policy advisor to the mayor, and senior policy advisor to the senior executive group for retirement purposes. That's being continued until April 14th. Item 23, ordinance 2014-24. This amends the pay plan to exclude the classifications of senior assistant to the mayor, press secretary, senior policy advisor from the unclassified service to include those classifications in the unclassified executive service, and to include new classification of senior policy advisor to the mayor in the unclassified executive service. That paper is being continued as well till April 14th. And then item 24, Resolution 2013-R252. This amends the rules and procedure. This would change the dates at which council meetings will be held, from the second and fourth Mondays of each month, to the second Monday of each month, providing that the fourth Monday of each month should be reserved for special meetings for emergency election purposes only, and providing for an organizational development standing committee. That paper is being continued for two weeks, so until the 24th of March. So, let's run down what we've got here. We started out with four items on consent, two are being continued, so we have two items left on consent agenda. Appointments, 15 appointments, one being continued, one being withdrawn, one reappointment, so we go from 16 down to 14. On the regular agenda, all four items continued, so we're down to no items on the regular agenda. So we look down at two items on consent, nothing on regular, but we do have one expedited consideration. This is being patroned by Vice President Robertson and Councilmember Mosby, and it says, "To request the mayor identify a source of funds in the amount of $50,000 that the council could expend to procure a firm with no financial interests and developments contemplated by previous resolutions," that was what they're calling the ballpark papers, "to provide the consulting services in connection with the council's evaluation of the negotiated proposals, and that the mayor propose an ordinance to transfer the necessary funds." That one is expedited consideration, and we will be hearing that one later on tonight. Citizen comment period, well, we're down to only six speakers here. We've got one concerning regarding cold weather shelters. Shirley Harvey is scheduled to be here tonight, former city councilman, to talk about the state of the city. We have someone speaking, two people speaking on economic development. One to speak on the baseball stadium, and one to talk about Richmond permits closing streets for races. And we get to awards and presentations, well, I can show you what the sheet looks like. It's blank. There are no Richmond City Council formal awards or recognitions scheduled for tonight. So that's what it looks like. It looks like we will definitely not be here until midnight. How long will we be here? We don't know. We won't know until we get started. We'll be doing that in just about five minutes from now. I'm Dick Harmon. Stay tuned.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for all being here tonight. At this point, I'm going to go ahead and call the formal meeting of Richmond City Council to order. Madam Clerk, excuse me, at this point, we're going to have the invocation given, and that's by Associate Pastor Carlos Rivera at the New Life Outreach International Church over on Turner Road. Immediately following that, will you please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pastor Rivera.
Dear heavenly Father, in Jesus' name we come to you today, thanking you, Lord God, for this wonderful city, thanking you, Lord Father, for all those that serve here on this council, the mayor, and all those that you're using in such a great and mighty way to improve and enhance what's happening here in this city. And Lord, we pray your blessing upon this meeting. I pray, O God, that you would give us wisdom and understanding, divine insight. And Lord, I pray for our city, I pray for our young people, I pray for those that are here, Lord God. I pray that you would just continue to build us up, Lord God, continue to pour out your Spirit upon this city, Lord God, that there would be a spirit of unity and of love and of brotherhood, one with another, Lord. And Father, today, we just thank you for the victory, Lord God, as we go forward to do your will, and we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. Madam Clerk, would you please give the chamber emergency evacuation plan announcement and the citizen speaker guidelines?
Upon activation of the emergency alarm systems, all persons should immediately exit the building. Please use the exits to the left and right front of the council chambers, or the east or west stairway outside the rear doors of the chamber. Do not use elevators or escalators. After exiting the building, proceed to the assembly area located in the parking lot, boarded by Clay, 8th, and 9th Streets. Citizens and employees should assist visually and hearing impaired visitors with exiting the building. Citizen Speaker's guideline: Citizen wishing to speak during public hearing and/or citizen comment period generally have three minutes to speak. Persons appear before council are not allowed to: campaign for public office, promote private business venture, use language of a personal nature which will insult or demean any person, include comments directed at public officials or staff members that are not related to their official duties, or address or question staff members directly. All questions are to be directed to the president of council. Failure to adhere to the guidelines may result in speakers forfeiting any remaining time and future disciplinary actions as necessary, which could include borrowing from attendance at future meetings of city council for a period of six months.
Mr. President, for the record, all members of council are in attendance this evening.
Thank you very much. I'd like to move forward with the appointments and reappointments, please, and unless there's an objection from council on paper number 11, 2014-R38, I would rule that we're going to suspend our council rules 5 subsection C to permit the appointment without requiring the appointee to be present. Is there any objection? All right, very good. Madam Clerk, can we please move forward with those?
Yes, appointment and reappointment papers are as follows, and when I call your name, if you would please stand or raise your hand. Item number five, resolution number 2014-R32, to appoint Sanford Bond as a member of the Commission of Architectural Review, American Institute of Architects nominee, for a term terminating November 23, 2014, succeeding David Johannes. Item six, resolution number 2014-R33, to appoint Larry Boyd. Larry Boyd? That paper will be continued until March 24th. Item number seven, resolution number 2014-R34, to appoint Arthur Burton as a member of the Career and Technical Education Commission for a term terminating March 10, 2017. Item eight, resolution number 2014-R35, to appoint Betsy Carr as a member of the Career and Technical Education Commission at-large member for a term terminating March 10, 2017. Item nine, resolution number 2014-R36, to appoint Brenda S. Kurton as a member of the Career and Technical Education Commission at-large member for a term terminating March 10, 2017. Item 10, resolution number 2014-R37, to appoint Cora Dickerson as a member of the Aging and Disabilities Advisory Board, caregiver of a disabled person, for a term terminating March 10, 2015. Item 11 is resolution number 2014-R38, to appoint Tichney Pickney-Epps as a member of the Career and Technical Education Commission, member of the School Board of the City of Richmond, for a term terminating March 10, 2017. Item 12, resolution number 2014-R39, to appoint Jeffrey M. McGallagher as a member of the Business Professional Occupational License Task Force for a term terminating upon the completion of the task force's duties, succeeding Mark A. Herzog. Item 13, resolution number 2014-R40, to appoint Raifert L. Harris Sr. as a member of the Career and Technical Education Commission, member of the Richmond Technical Center Career and Technical Education Advisory Council, for a term terminating March 10, 2017. Item 14, resolution number 2014-R41, to appoint Gerald Jason Hendricks as a member of the Commission of Architectural Review at-large citizen for a term terminating March 10, 2017, succeeding John W. Pierceall III. Item 15, resolution number 2014-R42, to appoint Bethany J. Miller as a member of the Career and Technical Education Commission, representative of the Greater Richmond Partnership Incorporated, for a term terminating March 10, 2017. Item 16, resolution number 2014-R43, to appoint Ellen F. Robertson as a member of the Career and Technical Education Commission for a term terminating March 10, 2017. Item 18, resolution number 2014-R45, to appoint Michael Taylor as a member of the Career and Technical Education Commission at-large member for a term terminating March 10, 2017. Item 19, resolution number 2014-R46, to appoint Carl J. Kurton as a member of the Career and Technical Education Commission at-large member for a term terminating March 10, 2017. Item 20, resolution number 2014-R47, to reappoint Ira R.C. Jr. as a member of the Building Code Board of Appeals Electrical Division, representative of an electrical contractor, for a term terminating March 21, 2017. Those are all of the appointment and reappointment papers that I have this evening.
Thank you. I want to thank each of you for your willingness to serve your city, our city, in the various roles. I also want to give a special tip of the hat to Delegate Carr for taking time, even though she's very busy across the street on certain months of the year, to still be willing to invest in our city's future. Thank you, Delegate Carr. If everyone, once we take the vote, will go see this gentleman in the bow tie, Mr. Rawls, he will take you over to the clerk's office and administer the oath of office to you there. Thank you all again so much for your willingness and dedication to serve and your dedication to our city. Are those that wish to speak in favor or against any of the folks tonight?
Good evening. My name is Silver Persinger. I'm a citizen of Richmond, Virginia, Fulton Hill. I would like to speak in opposition to item 11, where you guys waived the rule that council has that people that are appointed to committees for the first time are required to attend the meeting, to be recognized by the public, and, you know, how many people are you appointing here tonight? 10 people or so? And they have all managed to come down here to appear before you all to be appointed. And Ms. Mosby asked for a special request, that this person was very sick, item number 11, to appoint Tic- Tichi? Tichi? I don't know how to pronounce her name. Pickney-Epps as a member of the Career and Technical Education Commission. I know several people in the audience behind me were appointed to that same commission. They did not get a special request that they didn't have to attend. I'm sure they would have preferred not to attend, and this is a council rule. Why do you think it's required that people attend the meetings? I think it's required because it gives the public an opportunity to know who's being appointed, although on the television program, they don't even get to see the audience members who stand. So, you know, there's a big portion of the public that isn't able to see who's being appointed, and they may only recognize their name, but they aren't here, so they don't get to comment anyways. This is the second time in recent history that you guys have exempted an individual from appearing for an original appointment. I don't think this practice should continue, and these are your rules. You know, I don't see any problem with continuing this paper for two weeks. Is there any critical thing that's happening in the next two weeks where it's a necessity that this person not attend a public meeting to be appointed to the committees they're being appointed to? I just think this is a bad practice. It's not professional. You guys aren't even following your own rules. You guys have routinely been violating your own rules for the last few months, and I've been calling you out on it, and it doesn't seem to make one bit of difference. So, here's yet another time I'm calling you out for not following your rules. I don't think the excuse that she's very sick is warrants voting on this paper here tonight. I think you guys should continue this paper for two weeks and bring it back when she can attend the meeting, like all these other people in the audience. Follow your own rules. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Persinger. Yes, Mr. Bullock?
I'm also in opposition to number 11. Ultimately, if I would have known that, I would at least have 1,000 people from the NAF District and all over the city of Richmond for this paper. And yes, I would like for you to continue for two weeks, so we can get an opportunity to get some people in here to speak in opposition to this. I'm very deeply concerned that they were even considered, so I would like for the paper to be continued and that she not to get special privileges. Thank you.
I'm sorry, could you just state your name for the record, please?
Oh, Roderick Bullock. I live in the 7th District. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bullock. Bring it back to council for any discussion. Ms. Mosby?
I'd like to thank Mr. Persinger and Mr. Bullock for your thoughts on the matter. Ms. Epps did not ask me, could she be out? She called, and I heard, she's sick. And there have been moments when I wasn't here, and it's the same question has been
And there have been moments when I wasn't here, and it's the same question has been, you're breaking the rules, Ms. Mosby is not here, and my mother had been rushed to the emergency room. Sometimes in life, things happen, and we have to deal with them accordingly when things happen. It is not that we want to be rule breakers. Sometimes in this life, things happen, and so I'm asking my council members to work with me on one of the things that have happened. If either one of these other members had called, and I felt like they needed to stay in, I might would have asked for the same thing for them. They did not. So I'm asking you all, council members, if you would vote with me that Ms. Epps would be allowed to be on this board tonight. Thank you.
Other discussion by council members. Seeing none, bring it back to council for a vote. Madam Clerk.
Council is voting on the appointment and reappointment papers as presented. Mr. Bilals? Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Mr. Agulasto?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newville?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
President Samuels?
Aye.
Those papers have been adopted.
Thank you. May we please review the agenda and make any amendments to it that are necessary?
Tonight's agenda amendments are as follows. Item 1, Ordinance Number 2013-175, will be continued to March 24 council meeting. Item 2, Ordinance Number 2014-27, will be continued to March 24 council meeting. Item 6, Resolution Number 2014-R33, will be continued to March 24 council meeting. Item 17, Resolution Number 2014-R44, has been withdrawn. Item 21, Ordinance Number 2013-199, will be continued to March 24 council meeting. Item 22, Ordinance Number 2014-23, will be continued to April 14 council meeting. Item 23, Ordinance Number 2014-24, will be continued to April 14 council meeting. Item 24, Resolution Number 2013-R252, will be continued to March 24 council meeting. Mr. President, those are all the amendments I have as far.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Does any other member of council have any additional changes? Madam Clerk, please call the question.
I need a motion to amend the agenda as read. Mr. Hilbert, will you make that motion?
So moved, Madam Clerk.
We are now voting on Mr. Hilbert's motion to amend the agenda as read. Mr. Bilals?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Mr. Agulasto?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newville?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
President Samuels?
Aye.
The amended agenda is before you.
Thank you very much. There is nothing that hasn't been continued on the regular agenda, so we will move expeditiously past that to the motions to amend and continue.
There are no motions to amend and continue. We just have one expedited.
That's exactly right, but we're going to hold off on that long enough to take care of the citizen comment period. I believe the first name is Mr. Braxton Bantoo?
That is correct. First speaker is W.B. Braxton Bantoo. Mr. Bantoo?
Not here.
The next speaker is L. Shirley Harvey.
Ms. Harvey here?
L. Shirley Harvey.
All right.
The next speaker is Shane Thomas.
Mr. Thomas.
Shane Thomas. The next speaker is Lizimba Montgomery.
Good evening. How y'all doing today? All right. My name is Lizimba Montgomery. I live at 1013 Arizona Drive. I am a resident of the Eighth District. I have lived in Richmond my entire life, but to me, the city of Richmond is still a city that is stuck in the 20th century. This city has potential for job creativity, economic development, and end of the war and poverty. In order to do that, it doesn't have to be a, you don't have to take a rocket scientist to know that this city has stepped outside of the box. Be creative, make some positive things happen for Richmond, Virginia. I support economic development, job creativity, as if you will. I support the Shaco Bottom development plans. I think this plan was the best for the city of Richmond. Also, this plan includes honoring my ancestors, which I long, long overdue. I give credit to the Slave Trade Commission for all their hard works and labors for the works to the slave trail, and I am one who believes in the commission for bringing our history to the forefront. I'd like to thank the council for moving this process forward, so we can fully develop the Shaco Bottom area while respecting our history with the slavery and freedom heritage site. There are fellow citizens out there that need jobs and all pay levels, and this plan helps to address those needs, short-term and long-term. Thank you for helping us create more employment opportunities for our citizens and residents. For those who oppose this plan and have done absolutely nothing to produce a plan that's better than this one, not to mention this plan will produce thousands of jobs. This plan should also put retail back on the boulevard. I should not have to go to White Oak Village, Short Pump, Virginia Center Commons, or Willow Lawn to get nice name brand necessities. I shouldn't have to take my money to Henrico. I should be able to spend my money right here in the city of Richmond where my money is needed. When and where is now my money is being given to schools, infrastructures, and helping with roads and other necessities needed by the city? We shouldn't play tic-for-tac or stick the needle in people's eyes or others as far as playing games with this is concerned. This plan is probably once-in-a-lifetime plan, and we shouldn't let this pass us by. Finally, as a citizen, there needs to be a MOU, a memorandum of understanding. I just want to let you guys know that the historical site being taken care of at the same time. There are things that are necessary to turn Richmond, Virginia into the 21st century city. If you get a chance, please come with me to my district, places like Jefferson, Davis, where we are in dire need of economic development and growth as well. Some areas in the district look horrible, and we need help. Richmond RVA is a very lively city, but the spirit has died years ago. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Ms. Harvey, come up to the seat. We're going to go through all the speakers and come back to you, okay?
That's quite all right.
The next speaker is Charles S. Vaughn.
Mr. Vaughn.
Mr. President, members of the City Council, my name is Charles Vaughn. I reside in Eighth District. I stand in stark opposition to the former speakers concerning the sports facility in Shaco Bottom. I view it as a disgrace to the city of Richmond. It is true that should be a historical district, because my understanding that historical papers have been put in from time to time to declare it an area historical district. For those of you that follow the news, there was a motion pitcher that gained the Pitch of the Year called 12 Years of Slave. Mr. Northrup was sold at the Godwin Jail at 17th and Gray Street. That's one of my concerns. My second concern concerns my district. I live in the Davie Garden subdivision. It was my understanding there's supposed to be a law against standing water. The Davie Garden Civic Association has been working for the last X number of years with Mr. Todd Hopkins concerning our drainage issue. He's been working to get one signature for 12 months, and the drainage system has not subsided at all. I've got water standing in my backyard, as well as my whole community. The city of Richmond proposes to borrow X amount of dollars to put a sports facility in. Our streets are atrocious. The potholes are, they're past potholes, and this was before the storm. Now, we can be patient, and we can be fair, but where is the fairness? In my community, and I can speak for my community, the street sweepers come by to sweep the streets, but they never move the vehicles, and they're never ticketed. The phone poles on Roughland Road are leaning 30 degrees. I call Vepco. Fine with them. The alleyways are in need of repair. I was told two weeks ago, to my face, the city does not repair alleys. I'm sorry, the city does not maintain alleys. They replace work. That's an insult. The man told me to my face, the bushes growing out across the alleyway. The city truck came down, the bushes were scraping. I put that in at the CAPS meeting last summer, that you're supposed to maintain the vegetation grass, because that man told me to take pictures and call it in, and he was driving the city vehicle. So how can we borrow money for a sports facility when ignoring the citizens of the city of Richmond? I've lived in Richmond my whole life, but that's going to be in question, because I am tired of playing games with the city of Richmond. I go to these meetings, I attend these meetings, and what do they tell me? We don't have enough people to do this. We've got three people cutting grass in the city. The medium strips are not being served. So where is the fairness? Where is the fairness? How can you complete this project in good faith? Look at our city. This is the capital city of the state of Virginia. Downtown Richmond is consumed with federal office buildings, state office buildings, VCU, churches, and the like. That's where our tax base is being eroded, and the burden falls on us, the little people with no voice.
Sir, please begin to summarize.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate you all listening, and what I had to say is the way I feel personally. I pay taxes in this city, and this is my view only.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. There is a lady in the back who's waving her hand. She's in a gray suit. If you would give her the information you just gave us, especially about the alleys that need regressing and some of the other public works issues, we'll make sure that she, that Ms. Jefferson gets in touch with Ms. Trammell, and we'll find a solution to those issues. If you'll talk to the lady in the gray suit, please.
Next speaker is Rodney Thomas.
Good evening, council members. I've already spoken with my councilman. In fact, he's called me, and we've called each other, and he's working on the issue, but it's something that has to be brought to the attention of the entire City Council. On Sunday, February 23, the area bounded by Belvedere, Lee Street, Fourth Street, down to Broad was sealed off because of Love Rock, Richmond Multi-Sports, and the Virginia Wine Festival had a marathon and 10K race going through the area. That area is surrounded by Ebenezer Baptist Church, Sharon Baptist Church, Hood Temple, Temple of Yahweh, Sixth Mountain Zion, and to a small extent, Greater Mount Mariah. The folks who came to church could not get there because from 6:00 a.m. on, the south side of Lee Street was shut off. No parking, no anything. And this is an area that is residential and has the churches and some business, so no one could park in that area. All of our churches have large numbers of elderly people who try to park as close as they can to the church. Unfortunately, that Sunday, they could not do that because a race, a race of all things, closed off those streets on a Sunday morning. I don't know about anybody else, but at least in the Baptist, Catholic, and most denominational religious denominations, Sunday is the day of worship, and for us to be unable to attend our churches, to park close to churches because of our race, makes absolutely no sense. The strange thing about it was whoever gave the permits out did not bother to notify the churches in the area. Even my own councilman was surprised when he got phone calls, because he didn't know anything about it. I don't understand how a permit to close off a major thoroughfare like Belvedere and Lee Street were issued without contacting the councilman, at least the councilman from that area. I can't understand how you could issue a permit for a Sunday. They would not do that up on Monument, and they sure wouldn't do that up at the far end of Patterson Avenue, but they did it in the Jackson Ward community, where asking that never again is a permit issued for any races on a Sunday. And if you're going to do it on a Sunday, let it be after 2:00, when we've finished church services. Give us that dignity. Respect our religious beliefs. Respect our ability to go to church. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas has provided me with a list of 200 signatures on a petition. I committed to him that I'd copy it and provide it to all of you. I've also, also, I've also also, I've also reached out to the Wine Expo as well as to the city administration to ensure that this is a communication issue we need to address and a planning issue we need to address for next year, because I anticipate they'll do it again next year. Ms. Trammell?
Mr. Samuels, if I can add something else? The 200 signatures that Mr. Samuels has, that's just from Sharon Baptist Church. You have a stack of them coming from Ebenezer. You have them from all the churches that I mentioned earlier. Every one of them have taken up petitions, and they will be delivered to the City Council via Mr. Samuels.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Mr. President, this speaker brings up some good points. You know, how come the council members aren't notified in advance that, you know, that the streets are going to be closed, and also, as he said, if you're going to have runners or any kind of sports activity, and it's on a Sunday, then let's make sure that it's after 2:00 p.m. As he said, a lot of seniors go to church in that area, and they have to walk and all of that, so why can't? I just think we need to have this maybe at the public safety meeting to bring up some of these issues that he has brought to our attention.
Be happy to. I think that's a great idea, Ms. Trammell.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Madam Clerk, I believe at least one of our speakers has shown up.
That is correct, and that will be L. Shirley Harvey.
Ms. Harvey, thank you for your patience in waiting.
Mr. President.
Mr. Hilbert?
I'm sorry. If Ms. Harvey could indulge me for just one moment. Churches south of Broad Street were also affected by this. My church, St. Paul's Episcopal people coming to Second Presbyterian, told me from south side that, from the Belvedere, excuse me, the Lee Bridge, that anything north of the Lee Bridge was completely backed up, that people couldn't get off of Belvedere. I mean, folks that normally don't say anything to me or say, Chris, I hate to complain about things within the city, were really concerned about this a lot, and the lack of notice was particularly troubling. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hilbert. Ms. Harvey?
Good evening. My name is L. Shirley Harvey, telephone number 232-4832. Check me out at therichmondradiantlightnewspaper@lsurleyharvey.com. Tonight, I wish to inform my fellow Richmonders that in order to understand Richmond now, you must remember the past. It is still the capital of the Confederacy, because our so-called leaders do not care how the people feel or what they think. Our leaders do what they choose, not what is required. Employees and board members of leading business organizations here are paid with our funds to sit around all day thinking up ways to spend our money and bond issues on endeavors they, not us, would like to see come to pass. It doesn't matter if the plan doesn't make any sense or how much it costs. It's our money, not theirs. Without erecting one single building here, there is a group of African-Americans in Richmond who can put thousands of people to work with great new products, inventions, and needed services, yet nobody will hear from them or provide them with funds because they are not in the boulay. They don't rub shoulders with the elite. They just have great ideas and a great work ethic. They deserve a chance to show what they can do. Some of the richest people in Richmond are members of Venture Richmond. Why are these members that brought us Main Street Station, the Sixth Street Marketplace, the Convention Center, all flops, still allowed to make decisions for us? Why is there no wide spectrum of the population allowed to participate in these organizations? The fact that Ellen Robertson of the Sixth District is a member of the Visitors and Convention Bureau and also on the Board of Venture Richmond tells us that she will vote for placing the ballpark in Shaco Bottom because she helped develop the plan. She is already committed to Venture Richmond, and to her, we, the people, do not matter. Why is John Barry still around as leader of anything for us? Why do James and Bobby Ucrop have their hands in seemingly all the business organizations in Richmond? The sports venues, the food stores, the RHA Board, the farmers market, and everything else? Why is there seldom a change in this leadership? Does anyone remember that the current food market in Church Hill was taken from Johnny Johnson and supposedly given to a Ucrop's relative? Forget that. Does anybody remember that Dwight Jones, your mayor, your reverend, your Sigma Pi Fab Boulay member, and the president of Venture Richmond was challenged in past years because he did not actually live in a district he represented? Remember when some members of his church sued him for money that they said he misused? When the court-
Harvey, thank you for your time. Would you like to summarize your three minutes or up?
I tell you, it must have been two minutes. Must have been a minute and a half. I timed this at home. But thank you so much. We do want you to know that Dwight Jones has an interest in the downtown ballpark more than you think, and we're a little tired of that, and it's time that this city started looking to what the people need, not what you want. And we know from the fact that he is now the- And we know from the fact that he is now the head of the Democratic Party in Virginia that he is going to make sure that he's going to run for governor with the backing of people who have money from the sports backers and from those people who want to put money down in the ballpark and in Chaco Bottom like H. Salomonsky. You guys know what you're doing. We don't, but I'm going to tell them. Read the Richmond Radiant Lighters on the Internet.
Mr. President, that concludes the speakers for this evening.
Thank you very much. May we please then move directly on to the consent agenda?
The consent agenda items are as follows. Item three, Resolution Number 2014-R30, to approve $250 from the Council District Funds to pay Carly Present LLC for the distribution of flyers to the Ninth District residents. Item four, Resolution Number 2014-R31, to approve $575.67 from the Council District Funds to pay the Department of Information Technology for the printing of postcards for dissemination to the Ninth District residents. Those are only two items on the consent agenda.
All right. Are there those who wish to speak in opposition to any item on the consent agenda? Mr. Dorsey.
I, a man, you can refer to me as whatever you'd like to, Charles, but I, a man, am going to make a lawful claim and a legal claim. Man creates government. God creates man. So I'm going to use the law of man and also, you know, Thos law, law of God. So the claim that I'm making, the lawful claim that only a man can make, is that everything on this consent agenda, and all one has to do is look at it, and everything this body does is based upon fraud. And I will cite Article One of Law of the Land. That's the U.S. Constitution. And this is a prima facie claim, meaning you've all heard this evidence, these exhibits, you know them well, from election fraud to banking fraud to unlawful giving away of property for construction kickbacks. We've laid them all out. So I'm making a lawful claim and a request on behalf of the people that all the property, which is all the work that is unlawfully, unlawfully taken by the city on behalf of who you all prostitute yourselves out to, the Federal Reserve Bank, the Virginia State Government, the United States so-called federal government. And we're going to make a claim, and we're claiming that obviously everything you do is fraudulent, that you're guilty of fraud in everything that you do. Everything that this body does is based on fraud. And I cite Article One of U.S. Constitution. I cite Declaration of Independence. And I cite King James Bible. That's a law book. That's a law book that I put above this law book, which you all create and commit fraud against in every action that you take. Now, this is prima facie a claim only a man can make. No one can dispute these claims. I cite International Banking Cartel as an exhibit. I cite information that I've gotten from someone known as DPV Smith, Legal Counsel of Federal Reserve Bank, that you all are knowingly committing fraud, that you are fugitives from justice, and that we request citing Article 31 of U.S. Code, property contained inside the Federal Reserve Bank of Richmond. And this lawful claim has been publicly made, and there can be no disputing it. There is no refuting this. And everyone knows that all being addressed here are guilty of fraud. Thank you for your time. Have a blessed day.
Are there those who wish to speak in support of any of the items on tonight's consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council. Seeing no discussion, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Council is now voting on their consent agenda, which consists of Item Three and Four. Mr. Blouse?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Mr. Agulasto?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
President Samuel?
Aye.
The consent agenda has been adopted.
Thank you. I believe we have one expedited resolution.
That is correct. That would be Resolution Number 2014-R48, to request that the mayor identify a source of funds in the amount of $50,000 that the council could expend to procure a firm with no financial interest in the developments contemplated by Resolution Number 2014-R29-33, adopted February 24th, 2014, to provide the counseling services in connection with the council's evaluation of the negotiated proposals arising from Resolution Number 2014-R29-33, adopted February 24th, 2014, and that the mayor propose an ordinance to transfer the necessary funds from the source to the city council's appropriation for fiscal year 13, 14, for such purposes as soon as possible. I will need a motion for expedited consideration of that paper. Counselor Newbill, will you make that motion? Submove, Madam Clerk. Counsel is voting on Counsel Newbill's motion for expedited consideration of Resolution Number 2014-R48. Mr. Blouse? Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Mr. Agulasto?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
President Samuel?
Aye.
That paper is before you for consideration.
Thank you. Which of my, which of the two patrons would like to introduce this expedited document?
Be happy to do that.
Vice President Robertson.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. This paper asks that we ask the administration, the mayor, to find in this year's budget estimate of not more than $50,000, which does not mean that that would be the actual amount that this service would cost. The purpose of the paper is for the council to bring on professional expertise to help us in the process of reviewing and analyzing the proposal that we expect to get from the administration in regards to the development that will take place, that is being proposed to take place in Chaco Bottom. As all of us very well know and have had the opportunity to be, the information shared with us by many means, including the variety of town meetings that we have had or public meetings we've had by our districts, as well as the many presentations that have been given to us here in this chamber, as well as the last meeting in which we had overcrowdedness of the Chamber of Residents that have come down to speak in support and in opposition to this development that is being proposed. This is probably one of the largest, most complex development proposals that I've seen in my 11 years on city council. The different components of this consist of tremendous development initiatives to address issues regarding flooding, flood zone. From that to the actual development, a respectable development in regards to the history of the city and the slave trade that has taken place in the city, to several different private sector developments, to transfers of land, to a very, very complex financing proposal that is based upon many assumptions as it relates to revenue that will be generated as a part of this proposal, and also the long-term management of the stadium and the revenue that it will generate to cover the debt services related to it. I think that what has motivated me to put this paper in, and the reason why I'm asking for it to be expedited, is to bring together professional consultants with expertise in these fields, just as many of our specialties that we encounter as a part of the city. When we are dealing in areas of expertise and specialties that are outside the rim of a normal proposal that is before us, we frequently seek out professional advice from those expertise to advise us. One of the things that I frequently have my constituents say to me at the end of the day, when we have gone through the process of making a decision pro or against any major development, and find out that perhaps there were some things that we could have looked at a little bit closer, is that to say I didn't know is not good enough. And so this paper is to provide, to the support of our staff and to the support of this council, the professional expertise to evaluate and make recommendations to us in our review of the proposal that we anticipate receiving. There has been some acknowledgement that there are professionals in this field who may be willing to provide pro bono services to us, that would be willing to provide us with a response to this paper with their expertise and so forth as to what those skills are and how their skills align with the types of development that is in this development, and that they feel that this action is essential for the council to consider to the degree that perhaps they would even be willing to provide many of the services pro bono. So the description of some of the things that we have defined in this paper on page three is an overview of some of the things that we would, I would think, that would be necessary. Certainly, professionals in this field may make recommendations somewhat differently than what has been articulated in the paper that is before you. I think it would be valuable to us to have these expertise, and I think it would help us tremendously in our deliberations over the proposal that we are anticipating coming to us. Our time for review is short. We will also be reviewing at the same time the new budget. As you all already know, the status of where we are as it relates to revenues and revenue shortfalls and revenue projections for the year. We also know that there are significant new initiatives that we'd like to put in place within this fiscal year. We're going to be inundated with that review and all of that information at the same time that we're going to be looking at this proposal. And so I think that it would be advantageous to us to consider bringing those expertise to the table, and that's what this resolution asks for. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Vice President Robertson. Are there those in the audience tonight that wish to speak in opposition to this
I, a man, I, a man. Yeah, I just want to thank you all for making it so simple to prove your fraud. And I'll use only your own writing, only documents received by so-called authorities who actually, under the law, have no authority. Says, "To request that the mayor identify a source of funds in the amount of $50,000 that the council could expend to procure a firm with no financial interest in the developments contemplated by Resolution Number 2014-R29-33." So, right there, there's a contradiction because there is a financial expenditure explicitly enumerated to be handed to a firm to contemplate a, what you have listed as, public expenditure, net public expenditure of $79,625,000. So, under ancient Judean law, if one is caught to lie once, then their entire testimony or their entire statements after that point are null and void. They have shown themselves to be acting in dishonor from the beginning. And, you know, anybody with eyes to see who isn't a Pollyanna or completely stupid knows that every single one of you is dishonorable on the take. And this, again, goes back to what I stated before, and that this is all about construction kickbacks. And that's all I can do and say. It's you all who are acting outside of the law, and it's you all who are continuously, continuously in dishonor, under the law. So if anyone can explain in detail how $50,000 equals no financial interest, I would be interested. Thank you very much.
Are there those that wish to speak in support of this paper?
Good evening. My name is Silver Persinger. I'm a citizen of Richmond, Virginia. I'd like to speak in support of this paper. This paper proposes to spend $50,000, I guess, to get a consultant to come in and to analyze the Chaco Bottom Stadium. I'm sorry, did I not demystify myself, Silver Persinger? Citizen of Richmond, Virginia. But I'd like to also take this opportunity to say that, because at the last meeting, when everyone was talking about the baseball stadium, I didn't get up because I wanted others to have a chance. But now I want to tell council members why I'm opposed to the stadium. And it's in connection with this, in that, you know, I think spending $50,000 upfront will hopefully be enough to poke enough holes in this development plan so the stadium in Chaco Bottom won't be built. And the reason I don't want it built is because it's, it's crony capitalism, it's power brokers in the city, economic interest. You know, the way I understand this whole proposal came about is that Highwoods Properties came to the mayor with a proposal. That's the same development company that came here four years ago wanting to put a baseball stadium in Chaco Bottom. Now I hear they're more interested in doing the development on the Boulevard. And along with the development on Boulevard, I want to encourage all city council members not to sell that land. Do not sell Richmond out of that land. That land is going to be worth so much more money in 50 or 100 years than it's worth now. It's not a joke. And you can, you can very easily get into things with big box stores, which is what it sounds like. You guys want to put it here. You guys can develop 30-year leases for this property. That's enough for them to make millions of dollars and generate lots of tax money for Richmanders. And then, in 50 years or 100 years from now, we can analyze, we, the Richmanders, the people of this city, not the none of you, what we want to do with this land in 50 or 100 years. Do not give this land away. I'm also opposed to this because Jack Barry, Venture Richmond, you know, this goes back to Richmond Renaissance. Jack Barry was the former director of Richmond Renaissance. Richmond Renaissance was formed in 1982, telling us we need to build a Sixth Street Marketplace to do economic development downtown. We saw how that ended. Eighteen, not even 18 years later, Richmond Renaissance is telling us, we need to tear this thing down. It's an eyesore. They told us to build it. They told us to tear it down. They're telling us to build baseball in Chaco Bottom. This is a bunch of crap. You know, I don't like how the developer for the hotel, McFarlane, who serves on your airport commission, who also owns a lot of property in Manchester, he's already determined to be the developer for the hotel. All these developers are the people that are going to be doing it. The people, they're going to be doing this, and this isn't right. This is a question of process. We need a public process. We don't want mayors in the future just dropping things in our lap, telling us we have to do this now or never. And it's not like that. And this isn't the sort of government you guys should be promoting. You should be promoting an inclusive government for all of us, not just developers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Persinger. Seeing no other speakers, I'll bring it back to council for any discussion or questions for the patrons. Dr. Newville.
Just a quick question for Madam Vice President. You mentioned something in terms of pro bono services. And so, were you referencing that as a possibility up to and including a contract or service? Could you clarify that just a bit?
All I'm saying is that there have been persons that have suggested that they would be willing to provide pro bono services if that wasn't and would be willing to submit a proposal of such, perhaps for us to take into consideration. I just, I know that, you know, one of the concerns that some folk have as it relates to $50,000, it's a lot of money. It's certainly, it is, the paper states that is an estimate up to that amount. And so, inasmuch, we really don't know what the proposals would come in at, what a consultant would offer for those costs. That is the estimate that was advised. I have no idea what that would be. But I do know that in the event that the administration, $50,000 is not something we can easily find, or if there is the wishes of the council that the services are provided and that if there are folk that are willing, and we agree that they have the expertise to do so, I just wanted to put that out there, that that had been offered. And I have no proposal, anything specific to that, from that perspective. And certainly, the reason why we expedite the papers is because we would have to put it out for procurement. And certainly, there are processes as it relates to that that I'm sure that we need legal advice on as it relates to the whole procurement process and other alternatives as it relates to pro bono in addition to that.
Ms. Graziano.
Thank you, Ms. President. I was just wondering, Madam Vice President, do you have a timeframe on this, or?
We are hopeful that we have probably, do we still have 30 days out before we expect to get our package back from the administration?
In speaking with the administration this afternoon, March 27th is still when they anticipate completing negotiations. There is no set day when they anticipate turning over a proposal to city council after negotiations are complete. Realistically, first or second meeting in April. But, I mean, it's safe. Nothing's safe in this world. But I would argue, we can rely that it would be before May 1st if they want to issue permits and have shovels in the ground by August 1st.
So, we're working within those time frames. We would certainly want to, you know, have this expedited, the emergency procurement process followed so that we can move forward with it on a rapid pace.
Mr. Agulasto.
Thank you, Council President. Like Councilwoman Graziano, I think a major concern would be the timeline to, A, do an ordinance to transfer funds once they've been identified to council, then council to go through procurement, to hire a contractor to do this work, to then go through however much time we want to give them. How much time does council expect for them to be thorough in their own analysis? So, I think that the timeline is of concern. One other issue that I see, based on the seven bullet points from this resolution, I'm not quite sure that the person who's going to understand floodplain mitigation is going to also be the same person who can understand whether the architectural design works within Chaco Bottom, who's going to be the same person who can understand the financial pro forma. You know, I think that those are reliably distinct and should, if we want the best advice, be handled by different professionals in different fields. Because I don't know one person that might have expertise in all three of those areas, which is of concern to me. The other component that I'd like to suggest, if this is the will of my colleagues to move this forward, you know, we're talking about $50,000 to give us more information. And certainly, I've dug into as much information as I can. But there's nothing in here that compels the administration to answer the questions of a consultant. Whereas, there's still questions, I think, outstanding from council members that if we can't get the answers to our questions, how is a third-party consultant going to get those answers? And we're talking about documentation that's within City Hall, not necessarily something they're going to find on the open market. The last component here is, if this is going to be moving forward, I'd like to add two additional provisions, which were made by Council President Samuels at the last hearing on this issue about, we should have an updated traffic study. If the last traffic study is dealing with data from 2008, we should have more information on the traffic proposal. We've had a citizen review all that and provide a lot of concerns. We've seen that VDOT is only recently getting into this consideration. I would certainly like to understand the implication of archaeology and historic significance of the Chaco Bottom land and whether or not there are federal dollars involved in any of the parcels that are there. As far as I'm aware, there might be Federal Transportation Authority money in city real estate. And if that's the case, you know, that's going to have an implication. And frankly, the city-owned land that's down there, we could start anything we wanted to today in terms of an archaeological investigation, should the city want to do that. It's nothing telling us that we can't just start removing pieces of soil and asphalt on city-owned land if we wanted to begin the investigation of what is underneath of Chaco Bottom. So, those would be some considerations that I would recommend us make amendments to this if it's the desire of council to move forward on authorizing a resolution to request $50,000 for outside consultants. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Agulasto. Mr. Hilbert. Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Newville.
I just wanted to get a little clarity from the counselor. When you, could you repeat what it is you would like to see added in terms of the traffic? Are you talking about further review of the traffic? What is it that you're, are you asking about a traffic study? I just wanted to get clear in terms of what you're asking.
That's perfectly fine. What I see in this resolution is the request for the mayor to set aside money for additional studies that would be initiated by city council to help advise us on their review and analysis. So, if we're going to be asking for additional study, additional review, additional analysis on floodplain, architectural design, pro forma, and the seven criteria here, I'd like to see the traffic reassessed because I don't think the 2008 data would be currently representative. And I would consider hiring a historian to consult us on the archaeological significance that we might consider.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a difficult situation. I think we certainly could have done this earlier. But I'm concerned now, as, I mean, we have voted on a resolution on this matter. I voted for that to give the administration some additional time to come up with, as Mr. Agulasto said, traffic information that was not at least five years old before hundreds, if not thousands, of apartments were built in Chaco Bottom. And the archaeological study. And the wording of this makes the consultant singular and not plural. So, I'm not sure the way this is currently written, that we could hire multiple consultants to give us some answers on this. With respect to review of the architectural design of developments contemplated for the Chaco Bottom and North Boulevard area, I'm unaware that there are any for North Boulevard. And that was also a criteria that I said I would give additional time for the administration to come up with answers related to the finances, related to a plan for the Boulevard, related to traffic study and archaeological findings in that area as a minimum for me to consider voting for the proposal when the final ordinance gets to us. And I'm not sure that I'm seeing, within a timeframe, that would be helpful for us to be able to incur these expenses and still come out with a better plan. I mean, at the beginning of, at the end of the day, in 2004, excuse me, 2003, the city voted 80% for a divided form of government. And this is a result of that, is you have a legislative and an executive branch and that each has to do their own study. That's additional cost that the city is just going to have to incur. Not suggesting that we revote on that, but I doubt it would pass by 80% today. So, what, but that is the situation we have. Council's a different body from the mayor and therefore, the executive's different from the legislature. We have to study these things. So, I would like to be able to do this. And maybe we need some dollars in the budget going forward to specifically look at economic development proposals from the council's perspective, or at least give us a quote-unquote "objective opinion." But it seems to me that this is specific to the resolution presented to council. And I think it's something we should look at in the next budget season. But it's very difficult for me to support this as it's proposed.
Other comments?
Mr. Samuels.
Vice President Robertson.
If everyone has a comment. I just want to make a few statements in regards to, just a correction. This is not a study. This is for the purpose of having consultants to help us in our process of review and analyzing the proposal that will be presented to us. I'm not asked, this paper does not ask for us to do a study. Secondly, it asks for consultant services. Due to the complexity of the development, there are specialties that would be needed in different areas. And whereas, I don't think it would be realistic for us to hire five or six different firms. However, I do think that it's possible that we could hire a consultant firm that will put together the expertise in the areas of services that would be requested. The timeline is the same timeline that we have to deal with. We're going to have to take the time ourselves to review the information that comes back to us from administration, independent of any other support services that we will get from anyone else that has expertise in this field. So, irrespective of our timeline, that's the timeline that we're going to have to operate under in order to be responsive to the requests that the administration is going to yield to us that they would like for us to make a decision on this. So, surely, if we cannot procure services within that period of time, we will not have anybody to help us in that process. I would hope that we can procure services if the council decide that they want to do this within the timeline. And any procured services that we hire will be working under the same rapid timeline that all of us are going to be working under for the first time, receiving the full package. So, yes, it's tight. Yes, it may not be the best way to do business. Who would have ever thought that we would have been dealing with a paper that we dealt with just a couple of weeks ago? But here we are. And I still feel that, you know, the complexity of this deal, the challenges that we've already faced, the thousands of emails that we get every day, the challenges, our capacity and knowledge and the expertise and the different expertise that is needed in order to fully evaluate the proposal that will come to us, I still would ask that we would consider. And certainly, I think we should do it as cost-effectively, but effectively and efficiently as we possibly can. But I just wanted to make that clear, Mr. President, that this is not a study. We're not asking for a study. And if, and it will include, sure, the package that we will get from administration, will include information about the archaeology, what is going to be done and what isn't going to be done and when it's going to be done and whether it's going to be done prior to any construction taking place, whether or not there's going to be a transportation study and when it's going to be done and how it's going to be done and what is to be included in will be in that package. So, this service will be looking at the same proposal that we will be looking at in totality. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes, Ms. Trammell.
One question. We just got this tonight, right? Expedited paper.
Yes, sir.
We just got it. I know by the time I get home, I will probably have about 20, 25 calls in reference to the people who are not able to know about this expedited paper. And I already had, you know, one speaker that lives in my district and I have two, or two speakers from my district, where one was talking about the drainage problems and all kinds of things on the Jefferson Davis corridor, which I am going to speak to Mr. Marshall about it tomorrow. Coming to work today, I saw just trash everywhere, like three blocks where somebody has taken newspapers and just dumped them all down Jefferson Davis. I mean, just horrible. And then, I also had a speaker that said that we need jobs. You know, this $50,000, we might not think it's a whole lot of money when you just say it was $50,000 and then it's not for a study. And I appreciate what the Vice President's done as far as getting this paper ready and bringing it all to us. But here we are, trying to read eight pages within a few minutes to try to make up a mind. But then, when you see people that come down here and say that we don't have this money to throw away. And then, who knows? A consultant might want more money, more this, more that, when we got other issues or we got other concerns about this. You know, we've got enough people, I guess I should say, with Mr. Mayor's office, with our office, that we can do this together. Because everyone says, "If you cannot put this together yourselves, then what do we need counsel? And what do we need Mr. Mayor for? If we can't work together, what they're hiring somebody to come from the outside to make $50,000 when we could be using that for infrastructure in our community?" So, I just, I can't support this paper at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trammell.
All right. Seeing no other questions, I'm just going to say a few quick words myself about it. I think Mr. Hilbert gets the apple for the day. This is the tip of the iceberg issue that shows a major problem with this form of government. There's nine of us, a few fiscal analysts, a few policy analysts, a chief of staff, and that's it. When you think about, good point, Mr. Agulasto. When you think about the volume of employees in economic development, in public works, in public utilities, that are working to make decisions to be proposals to us, and we have ourselves and a few others to work through those proposals to determine whether or not they're in the best interest of the city of Richmond, you realize that there is a dichotomy between the two sides of government. We can't change a budget during the year unless the mayor specifically brings forward what needs to be changed. We can't, if he says, "I want to add $5,000 to this, tack onto it, and we need to withdraw $5,000 from that." We don't have that authority under our charter. We don't have that authority under our charter. We are the governing body of the City of Richmond, who only has budgetary control in that short window between the middle of March and the end of May. Regarding this paper specifically, what happens if we do go forward and the administration says, well, it's a resolution? It's not a rule of law. We don't have to. Or if they simply say, we cut to the bone. There is no $50,000 to identify. What happens if there is? Well, we can't get through a request for proposals and award fast enough before August 1st rolls around, when permits are meant to be issued and construction is meant to start in the bottom. What happens if the request for proposal and awards is accomplished, but the person after reviewing the proposal says, or the firm says, we're going to need more than a month or two months to evaluate this proposal. This is significant. Let's not kid ourselves. The proposal has been around in one shape, way, or form, or the other, since 1975, but realistically, this version took over a year to create. We were working under one set of ideas for four months and then voted on a different proposal two weeks after it was introduced. What if the adminis, or the firm that we hire says there's not enough information to evaluate? I don't think we need to answer those questions tonight, but as we take our vote, I think we're going to have to consider the different possibilities. It's always fun to play what if, but it doesn't get things done unless you're still in the planning stage, and we're moving quickly outside of the planning stage. I, for one, am going to support this paper for the following reasons. First of all, it is a tip of the iceberg issue, and I'm hopeful that if this experience goes well, we will take the coming budget or spend the next year developing a different structure for city council offices to ensure we have the manpower and support necessary to create a solid, functioning, governing body. This form of government does not need to be adversarial. We should be able to trust the administration, but our citizens expect us to verify the information that the administration provides and to govern accordingly. We can't do that if it's just nine folks versus 4,000. Madam Clerk, please call the question.
Mr. President?
Yes, Ms. Trammell.
I'd like to make a statement on yours.
Sure.
We've been talking about this for how long? About open communication with Mr. Mayor and with us? And it is just so funny, this last night, I was just reading the article, I think it was in Style Weekly, about the mayor saying he's going to have open government with all nine council members. Now, here it is. You know, and you just make that statement. Need to think about that. Thank you.
Council President?
Madam, Mr. Agelasto?
Thank you. I had a moment to think about Councilwoman Trammell's comments earlier, and we are being asked to expedite something that, in my mind, we could debate a little bit longer, or at least give the public an opportunity to know that this was being introduced prior to our conversation. And, you know, I know we're on a timeline, but would it not help for this resolution to be continued to the next council meeting? And as such, I'd like to make a motion to continue it for two weeks.
Right. There is a paper before us, a motion, as it were. There is a subsidiary motion to continue. The motion to continue is not debatable, but, oh, it is debatable, and it requires a second.
Second.
Is, I hear Ms. Trammell, second. Discussion on the continuance of the paper before us.
Mr. President?
Mr. Hilbert?
Seagull question. The fact that we just voted to expedite something, would that not require reconsideration of the expedite, expediting motion?
It's a different way to get to the same place, but both are proper.
Okay, so I should try that the next time, I guess? I'm sorry for that.
That's fine.
Sparky comment. I apologize.
Any other comments on Mr. Agelasto's motion to continue the paper? Mr. Agelasto, do you want to solidify your motion, since we are on the record right now? Motion to continue to the next council meeting with a referral to finance, motion to continue until June 2016. What do you want?
I think I was asking for a continuation for two weeks, which would give us to the next meeting on the 24th of March.
All right. Ms. Trammell, is it safe to assume that you are seconding that?
Yes.
Okay. Discussion? I don't see any discussion.
Discussion. The only caution I would give as it relates to that is the fact that we've already raised the issue of how much time we have to go through the process of procuring. This is a very specialized kind of request. I don't doubt that this could be challenging in finding, you know, the service deliverers to meet this request that is before us. It would certainly have to be someone that could hit the ground running and stick to it pretty fast. So I think any extension of delaying, I mean, there's always, already been some concern that, why am I so late coming forward with this? We've been working on this, having this discussion to some degree, and trying to determine whether or not this is a good use of spending of taxpayers' dollars. And it's not been an easy decision. And I would just caution my colleagues, if they support the paper, that, you know, we will be adding additional time. In the question that I would ask of the, of Mr. Agelasto as it relates to the continuance, the expediting of the paper is more than just expediting the paper, it's also for the purpose of us looking at emergency procurement processes as well, and the timeline is critical in that process. So I don't know whether your motion would be for us to introduce, go through committees, and do all of those kinds of things. If we do, then, you know, surely the time that it would take us to get through this process would probably be counterproductive in being able to be able to have someone in place to help us at the time when we get the proposal.
Mr. President, the reason why I said that let's continue it for two weeks, this would give the citizens out there a chance to come here and speak for it or against it, instead of us just trying to, because this is the taxpayer's money, $50,000, and I think they have a right to come here and speak for it or against it.
Thank you, Ms. Trammell. Okay. Unless there's any further comments, I'm going to ask for a vote on Mr. Agelasto's motion to continue for two weeks. Madam Clerk?
Counsel is voting on Councilwoman Agelasto's subsidiary motion to continue Resolution Number 2014-R48 for two weeks, coming back to counsel on March 24, 2014. Mr. Bilalz?
No.
Ms. Graziano?
No.
Ms. Mosby?
No.
Mr. Agelasto?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
No.
Vice President Robertson?
No.
President Samuels?
No.
That motion has not passed.
All right, which brings us back to where we were before, where I was about to call the vote after council discussion on whether or not to support or oppose this paper. Madam Clerk?
Counsel's voting on Resolution Number 2014-R48. Mr. Bilalz?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby?
Aye.
Mr. Agelasto?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
No.
Ms. Trammell?
No.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
President Samuels?
Aye.
That paper has been adopted.
Okay, and I believe that ends our expedited papers.
That is correct.
Moving forward to approval of the minutes. Do we also have an amended minutes to approve? Am I correct on that?
No, no amendments.
Ah, okay, then just amendments. Then just a minute, please.
Okay. The minutes to be approved are from the February 24 informal, informal meetings to February 27 special meeting and the March 6 special meeting. Mr. Bilalz, would you make a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Counsel's voted on Mr. Bilalz's motion to approve the minutes as presented. Mr. Bilalz? Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Ms. Mosby? Mr. Agelasto?
Aye.
Mr. Hilbert?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Vice President Robertson?
Aye.
President Samuels?
Aye.
Thank you. Those minutes have been adopted.
Thank you. Reports and announcements. Mr. Bilalz?
Nothing, Mr. President, other than to say we will be introducing a resolution to honor the late Senator Benjamin Lambert, whose service was today. Several of council members attended. It was a wonderful service for a wonderful man.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no announcements, but I would just like to echo Mr. Bilalz's comments on Senator Lambert. He was indeed a great man and a great loss to the City of Richmond. Thanks.
Thank you, Council President. Like my colleagues, I think everybody on council mourns Senator Lambert's passing. A couple of announcements pertaining to the district. Tomorrow evening, the Randolph Community Group will be gathering at 6:00 PM at the Randolph Community Center at 1415 Grayland Avenue, and they have several items on their agenda. The other civic group meeting before our next council reconvenes is on March 17. Monday, March 17, the Maymont Civic League will be meeting at 7:00 PM at the Maymont Stone Barn inside the Maymont Historic District at 1700 Hampton Street. And then finally, on Thursday, March 13, and I think my colleagues on council will reiterate this one, the Georgewith High School Bulldogs are going to be in the state championship for the Division 3A, and they will be playing John Marshall Boys Basketball at 2:00 PM at the Siegel Center. And I think it's fantastic that we have two Richmond Public School teams playing in the state championship this year, and I really want to commend Coach Coker and all the Bulldogs for what is a remarkable season to win their Division 3A East Championship to get there, and I'm looking forward to cheering on the Bulldogs this Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hilbert?
Thank you, Mr. Hilbert. On the heels of what Mr. Agelasto said, I want to congratulate John Marshall and their second visit to the state championship. We're really excited for the players and Coach White and all the work that they have done. And I challenged the young men and the coaches when they were here a year ago to come home with the championship, and certainly, we hope that happens. But regardless, may the best team win, and we'll certainly have them down to congratulate them at the next meeting. The, the next meeting of the Education Human Services Standing Committee will be Wednesday, March 19 at 5:00 PM here in City Hall Council Chambers. This month's agenda will include a presentation from Kelly Kinghorn, the Executive Director of Homeward, on the organization's strategic and resource development. Homeward is the coordinating agency for homeless services in the Richmond metro area, and will also have preliminary results from the point-in-time study on, which is conducted semi-annually, of interviewing people that are homeless and getting some background information on them, as well as, and this is all done anonymously, but also to get raw numbers as to where homelessness is going, increasing or decreasing. The district meeting, the next third district, North Side, meeting is Wednesday, March 26 at 6:00 PM at Pine Camp. We'll have safety tips from our police lieutenants or captains there on the, on the ground in the, in the third district. We'll also have a community services update from Dominion Power, and we're also going to welcome our neighbor to the east, Councilwoman Robertson, in the continuing series of Meet Your Council, and we want to have each member of council come and share their thoughts with the third district residents. And thank you, President Samuels, for coming earlier, and we're going to go around and ask each council member to come. We're also going to talk about the, excuse me, we talked about it our last meeting, but we'll have some information on tax relief. We want to make sure that everyone participates in that, that is eligible for elderly and disabled homeowners of relief from property taxes in the City of Richmond, depending upon your, your, your income. Your taxes could be reduced by as little as 30 and up to 100%. The deadline for filing on that is March 31, and you can get the forms by contacting the Department of Finance or your council district liaison. We have a third district newsletter. If you would like to be added to that, it's electronic newsletter that's sent out at least twice a week. Please call Lisa Townes at 646-6055, or email her at lisa.towns@richmondgov.com, and that's Townes, T-O-W-N-E-S. And please remember that your email information will kept, will be kept confidential. Mr. President, I would like to add my voice to those that mourn the loss of Senator Lambert. He was a constituent of mine and someone whose advice in council I could count on, an absolute consummate gentleman, and verified his influence by the thousands of people that honored him today at the funeral, as well as yesterday and Saturday, visitations of the families. I want to personally thank, thank his family for allowing him the time to come and share his gifts with the greater community. I know that was a great sacrifice for them, and to the extent it would give them any comfort, please know that the entire community mourns with you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ms. Trammell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too would like to say that Senator Lambert was a very good friend of mine, and back in the day, when I first got on council in 1998, I could call him and ask him for advice. Maybe sometimes I didn't want to hear it, but he would tell me how he felt, and he's definitely going to be missed in our City of Richmond because he's just a powerful force that we had in the City of Richmond. So my heart goes out to his family, and I too would like to thank his wife and his family for allowing us to have so much time of Senator Lambert. This right here is your free smoke alarm. If you call 646-1526, that's 646-1526, the firefighters will come to your home. They will not leave this with you. They will install the smoke alarm for you. And if it's beeping, that means it needs a battery. And if it doesn't have a battery, it's not going to work. So make sure that you have a working smoke alarm in your home. And if you cannot get through to this number, you can always go to the nearest fire station and ask them to come to your home, and they will set up an appointment and install this. And as I, and as our president, Barack Obama of the United States of America, says, every home should have a working smoke alarm, and take advantage of it, because it is about the only thing that's free right now in the City of Richmond. Thank you.
Dr. Newbill?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, the citizens of the Seventh District East End Community, and I join all Richmonders in acknowledging the passing of one of Richmond's great leaders, Mr. Benjamin Lambert, and we convey our sincere condolences to the Lambert family. Thank you. I have two meeting announcements. First, Richmond's first Better Block Project is being planned now for our historic 25th Street. The Better Block is an international movement that started as a community effort to help transform neighborhood blocks into vibrant and healthy community destinations with amenities for children, seniors, residents, and visitors alike. The initiative is temporary, and it demonstrates ways to create a safer and more inviting environment. The initiative is temporary, and it demonstrates ways to create a safer and more inviting environment for people to work, play, and thrive, with the ultimate goal of attracting small businesses and other amenities to the quarter. And so, this week, Wednesday, at 6:00 PM, I am inviting the community residents from throughout our district to join me at the corner of 25th and Venable Street, so that we can do a community walk-through and begin to plan for what that Better Block footprint would look like in our district. And we will then, after the walk, convene at the Robinson Theater to discuss that a little more. So join me Wednesday evening at 25th and Venable Street to plan for Richmond's first Better Block Project in the East End of Richmond. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Newbill. Ms. Moos-
No.
Oh, I'm so sorry. When you said "thank you" that time, I thought you were-
Two, yeah, just two. The 7th District meeting will be held Monday, March 17th at 6:30 PM at the Family Resource Center located at 2405 Jefferson Avenue. Our agenda items will include an update on the 2014 and 2015 Richmond Bicycle Race Course, a question that has been on the minds of many, where what's the path? And so that information will be shared. In addition, we'll have our Police Department Lieutenant Daniel Minten present to do a community update in terms of public safety. The larger discussion will focus on Bonvacore Virginia Health Systems' Nine Mile Road Health Services Expansion Proposal, and so that presentation will occur there, as well as an opportunity for questions, comments from the community. So again, please join me Monday, March 17th for our district meeting at the Family Resource Center, 2405 Jefferson Avenue at 6:30. But this week, join me at the corner of 25th and Venable Street to do the planning for our Better Block Initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Moosby?
Thank you. I too would like to first honor Senator Lambert. He is not someone that I got an opportunity to know or meet. However, I do not take it lightly, anyone that paved the way for me to be in this place that I'm in today. So, want to say that. I would also like to remind our residents of our next district meeting, which will take place on March 20th at the Goodwill Center on 6301 Midlothian Turnpike from 6:00 PM to 7:30. That is where we come and we share ideas on where we see our district going. Ms. Alma Moore will be having her 9th District Civic Association meeting, the Midlothian Civic Association meeting, on tomorrow, and that meeting will be discussing her meeting on the 11th of April, which will have Dr. Bedden, our RPS Superintendent. She's going to have a boys choir rendering music, so it's going to be a big to-do over at the Social Service Building on April 11th. And we'll be discussing that on tomorrow at her meeting at 6:00 PM. And so both of these meetings will be at 6:00 PM. Our 9th District residents, I would like for you all to be expecting your 9th District Newsletter. That should be going out to you by the end of the week, so we should be expecting to get that, and that gives us great information about what's going on in our district. I also would like to just give a quick thought on, every day I send out something that says on Facebook, "A Thought For Today." And today, the thought that went out was that, let me get there. It said, let me a second. Opinion and emotion has caused more trouble on this little earth than plagues or earthquakes. I say that to say that the paper that was just voted on, we were elected to lead, and sometimes it's okay to say, "We need help leading." This is one of those moments that our constituents want the best out of their leaders. And so I'm happy that we decided to move forward on that and get some extra assistance on the things that we need to make sure that we're doing what we should do for our citizens. So thank you all for helping me and Vice President pass that paper forward. I think our citizens would be happy, even though they couldn't vote on it. I think they would be happy based on the emails that I've seen that say, "Please consider this, please consider that, please consider." I think that they would know we're considering. So thank you all, my colleagues, for that.
Thank you. Before I go to Vice President Robertson, did anybody forget anything tonight? This is your chance.
Speak now, forever hold your peace.
Okay. Vice President Robertson.
So I will be the only one that have an opportunity to forget something. Thank you, Mr. President. Just got a couple announcements. On Thursday this week, at Legends, there will be a meeting with the Manchester Alliance and other citizens that are interested to review the Hall Street Traffic Study that has been done by the city of Richmond, and specifically deals with parking on Hall Street. But there are other parking and transportation circulations that was also included in the study. So that meeting will be held Thursday at 321 Seventh Street, Legends, and it starts at 6:00. Also, we wanted to make sure that the citizens were aware that the Mayor's Youth Academy is accepting applications for youth summer programs. There are four different programs that one can make application for. The Mayor's Junior STEM Program are for those that are 13 years old. For those 14 to 16, there's a counseling and training program. Life Stage, age 14 to 15, and Summer Work Experiences, age 16 to 19. Those applications must be by March 31st to be considered. Also, on April 22nd, the Police Department is having their 7th Citizens Police Academy, where they provide training for citizens on how to work effectively with the Police Department, and also prepare citizens for establishing Neighborhood Block Watch. If you are interested in being a part of that, we advise you to make contact with our city Police Department to receive applications to participate in this academy. The academy will start on April 22nd. Applications are now being accepted. And lastly, we are also having a follow-up town meeting, which will be April 12th. It will be at the Richmond Time Dispatch. We will be dealing with housing and the different options for housing throughout the city of Richmond. And we too, on behalf of the citizens of the 6th District and myself, Senator Lambert was a great hero. He was a great friend, and his family also have made major contribution. The entire family has been such a treasure to the city of Richmond, and certainly, we are a better place because of his services, and our hearts of sympathy goes out to the families, and we pray Godspeed and comfort to them in this time of loss. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. On Thursday, March 13th at 11:00 AM, I'll be joining Mayor Jones, John Lugble of Sportsbackers, and Dr. Stern of the Richmond City Health District at a press conference at Avon Clay Park, which is right at the intersection of Brook and Lee Street, to announce the Second Annual RVA Streets Alive. It's a wonderful festival walk event. It's scheduled for Saturday, June 21st. It's going to be great. It will, however, close some roads to automobile traffic, allowing residents and visitors to use those streets, to be active through running, walking, biking, and many other physical activities. I'm telling you now, so that you will know come June 21st, I'll continue to say it with the hopes of people not being surprised by it. On Monday, March 17th at 7:00 PM, the Museum District Board Meeting will be at St. Gertrude's High School, which is at 3215 Stewart Avenue. March 18th will be Historic Jackson Ward at Club 533, excuse me, at the 533 Club, which is at 700 North Third Street. Tuesday, March 25th at 6:00 PM, the Robinson Street Association. Tuesday, March 25th, 7:00 PM, the Carver Area Community Improvement League, which is at 1103 West Marshall. I'll be attending there as well. I hope everyone will come out. And lastly, because of snow last week, the Fan District Association, I believe, is meeting even as we speak, although it's been 45 minutes since they started, so they may be winding up at this point. I look forward to seeing all of you all out and about in the community. I couldn't say what's been said any better about Senator Lambert than what's been said already today. So before we have introduction of the papers, I'd ask for a moment of silence to remember Madam Clerk, if you would, please read the papers for introduction.
Mr. President, the introduction papers for this evening are as follows. Ordinance Number 2014-33, to authorize the CAO to accept $120,000 from the Capitol Tree Foundation and to appropriate to the Stormwater Facility Improvement Projects for the purpose of making improvements to the 14th Street corridor between Bank and Broad Streets. Planning Commission meeting, March 17th at 1:00 PM. Council Public Hearing, March 24th. Ordinance Number 2014-34, to amend City Code Section 2-1027 concerning the Career and Technical Education Commission to increase the number of at-large members from 10 to 11. Education and Human Service Standing Committee, March 19th at 5:00 PM. Council Public Hearing, March 24th. Ordinance Number 2014-35, to amend Ordinance Number 2000, I'm sorry, 2014-35, to amend Ordinance Number 2013-48-75, to appropriate $90,000 to Neil Meyer Community Development Corporation for the Revitalization of Brooklyn Park Boulevard. Finance and Economic Development Standing Committee, March 20th at 3:00 PM. Council Public Hearing, March 24th. Ordinance Number 2014-36, to authorize the CAO to accept $1.4 million from the Office of the Attorney General of Virginia and to appropriate to the Department of Police for a new K-9 Training Facility, Tactical Body Armor, a driving simulator, and software to meet accreditation requirements. Finance and Economic Development Standing Committee, March 20th at 3:00 PM. Council Public Hearing, March 24th. Ordinance Number 2014-37, to authorize the special use of 2621 Grove Avenue Retreat Hospital for modification of certain identification and directional signs and a parking garage. Planning Commission, April 7th at 1:00 PM. Council Public Hearing, April 14th. Ordinance Number 2014-38, to authorize the special use of 3200 West Clay Street for a multifamily dwelling and accessory parking. Land Use Housing and Transportation Standing Committee, March 18th at 3:00 PM. Planning Commission, April 7th at 1:00 PM. Council Public Hearing, April 14th. Ordinance Number 2014-39, to authorize the special use of 935 West Grace Street for an ATM accessible from the exterior of the building. Planning Commission, April 7th at 1:00 PM. Council Public Hearing, April 14th. Resolution Number 2014-R49, to initiate an amendment to the city zoning ordinance by modifying City Code Section 114-930.3 concerning the Commission of Architecture Review for the purpose of organizational and name changes by revising Alliance to Conserve Old Richmond Neighbors to Better Housing Commission and James River Chapter of the American Institute of Architects to Richmond Chapter of the American Institute of Architects. Land Use Housing and Transportation Standing Committee, March 18th at 3:00 PM. Council Public Hearing, March 24th. Resolution Number 2014-R50, to approve an expenditure in the amount of $624 from the Council District Funds for an advertisement for a 6th District meeting published in the Richmond Free Press. Council Public Hearing, March 24th. Resolution Number 2014-R51, to approve an expenditure in the amount of $100 from the Council District Fund for the 8th District donation to Camp Divas 2014 Date With Dad Dinner and Dance. Council Public Hearing, March 24th. Resolution Number 2014-R52, to approve an expenditure in the amount of $998 for the Council District Funds for the 8th District donation to the Broadberry Homeowners Association, LLC, to assist with neighborhood entry signage. Council Public Hearing, March 24th. Mr. President, that concludes the reading of the legislation for this evening.
Thank you. Unless there's any other business, this meeting is dismissed. Adjourned, excuse me.
Okay, well adjourned, dismissed, whatever. We're done for the night. A lot shorter than our last meeting. We got started at 6:03, so about 2 hours, about 1 hour and 50-some minutes in total tonight. We got called to order, the appointments and reappointments. That was probably one of the longest papers being read, was all the appointments and reappointments. Got to awards and presentations, there were today, so we kept on moving. Got the agenda review, then the regular agenda, nothing left on the regular agenda. Citizens' Comment Period, that ran about 15 minutes. Got the consent agenda, only two papers there. Then we got to the one expedited consideration. Now, what this one did is requesting that the mayor find $50,000 to hire a consultant services for the Chaco Bottom and North Boulevard Proposals, what we've been calling the Ballpark Papers. Councilman Agulasto, he would like to see an updated traffic study, archaeological investigation. Sponsor Vice President Robertson said this was not really a study, this was for consultants to look at what was being proposed, and was give them a better idea of the overall. But then Councilman Agulasto, after also Councilmember Trammell suggested, "We need a little more time on this. People haven't been able to come out here and talk about this." They moved for a continuance of the paper for two weeks. That was deferred by a 3 to 6 vote. The only ones in favor were Councilmembers Agulasto, Hilbert, and Trammell. And then they got to the final vote, and 43 minutes after the paper was introduced, the final vote was 7 to 2 in favor, with the 2 dissenting votes coming from Hilbert and Trammell. Got the reports of council, the introduction of papers, and now we're adjourned. So an hour and 50 minutes after we started, we are done for the night. We'll look forward to seeing you again on the 24th of March, which will be our very next Richmond City Council meeting. I too, before we sign off, would like to express my condolences to the Lambert family. I had a chance to work with Senator Lambert for two sessions of the State Senate, and found him to be a true gentleman and someone who really cares about his constituency, and big shoes to fill. And I'm not sure if anyone can do that, because he left quite a mark on the Senate of Virginia, on the Commonwealth of Virginia, all in a positive manner. So our sincerest condolences to the Lambert family. Now, we will see you again in two weeks. Till then, for Gobble to Gobble, I'm Dick Carmen saying, "Good night."